All right. Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everybody here today and our viewing audience as well to the Thursday, May 23rd, 2019, City of Davenport Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting. Your participation in city government is appreciated and welcome. If you have a pager or a cellphone, we ask that you turn it off now, even if it's just in silent mode, it can still interfere with the city's electronic system. My name is Kathleen Hart. I'm the chair of the committee here today's members. The mem- excuse me, the members present today are, to my far left, Lynn Cochran; to my immediate left, Judith Lee; and to my far left, that's my right.
Hello.
Um, to my far right.
The other left.
The other left is Scott Copes. To my immediate left would have been Jim Reisstrafer, who is our vice chair, and he is excused from being at the meeting today. The zoning board of adjustment is a five-member judicatory board established by state law. We're appreciated by the mayor and confirmed by city council to serve without compensation for a five-year term. We normally meet twice each month to hear appeals involving hardships from strict application of current zoning law. We may also grant variances from, and rule on a variety of discretionary permits. Were there any corrections to be made from the minutes from our last meeting? If there are no corrections, I'd take a motion to approve.
I saw move.
And a second?
A second.
All in favor? Any in opposition? The minutes are approved. There's, just to double check, there is no old business. The first item of new business is on behalf of Andrew Dasso for Red Band Coffee. Is the petitioner present? Wonderful. This is request SU 19-01 of Andrew Dasso on behalf of Red Band Coffee at 1304 Brady Street for a special use to approve a drive-through facility. The property is zoned C1 Neighborhoods Commercial District. Section 17.08.020, Table 17.08-1 of the Davenport Municipal Code requires a special use for drive-through facilities on properties zoned C1. This is in the third ward. Alderman is Ms. McGinnis. Scott, would you please present for the city?
Community planning, this is Scott Copes. So, our new code, I don't know if anybody came down to adjust this, this is set up for a meeting previously. Our new code has four sections that we look at for these drive-throughs, special use permits. One section looks at the number of adequate stacking spaces for the drive-through. It did meet the requirements there. The second one is, there's no.
Just trying.
Traffic circulation. And thirdly, adjacent residential lots, the drive-through immediately abuts to a commercial lot. And the other, I guess there's one more thing, is the bailout lane, there is a proper bailout lane. So they've met those conditions. And then we also have our regular approval standards for special use permits, and it has met those. So staff recommendation is for approval. If you want to look at the diagram, Brady Street is over here, 13th is down here, they're going to come off of Brady Street, go around the building, and this is where they order, they have the bailout lane here, and exit around in that manner. Any questions for the board?
No.
Just a quick one.
Um, Judith.
I'm sorry. Just a quick one, so it'll, so they'll exit through the alley?
That's how they have it now. There's parking in this area, and they would exit through the alley, yes.
Any others? Thank you, Scott. Great, thank, all right. Then, this would be, Mr. Dasso, would you be presenting, or do you have somebody presenting on your behalf? If you would, please go ahead, give us your name, address, and present your request.
Architect with Streamline Architects at 318 East 3rd Street, Davenport.
I'm Rick Cook, owner of Red Band Coffee.
What was the last name?
Cook.
Cook, thank you.
Yeah. Um, Rick has operated on the property, that's the dark poche, for.
Twelve and a half years.
Twelve and a half years.
There's an electronic, the pointer.
Oh.
There you go.
Uh, this building here, and so recently, past year, he purchased.
1304.
1304.
Yeah.
And we've been working on ways to accommodate a drive-through on the property, and I don't know how many iterations we've gone through, but we've met with the city staff and have come to an agreement that this is the best solution in order to accommodate stacking and meeting and exceeding the requirements of the stacking, so. There is still parking on the side from the existing building. There'll also be a window here to go inside, the same operation that they do currently have. And then additional staff parking here.
Um, yeah. That parking right there would just be a couple slots for customers to come in quick, get their products and leave. I have parking right here, we'll maintain that. This is the retail area that I've had for years, and we're going to maintain that. So I'm really just adding, back in our garage area, we're adding our drive-through equipment and window back here. And then we plan to pour new asphalt on the alley there as well. Make it nice and smooth, so.
So just, can you point out, is it, will you just have the one drive-up window?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, Brady Street, they come in, move around, and then order, pick up, and then out, 13th, or up to 14th.
Okay. All right, very fine. Any specific concerns that you were aware of that you wanted to address with us?
Well, right now, there's a concrete apron from Brady to the whole front of 1304 there that just isn't in code, so we're going to put a curb in there.
Oh, okay.
Sidewalk, seven foot of landscaping.
Okay.
And really trying to make it look nice.
Okay, yeah, that will look nice. I didn't know that wasn't, per code, actually, but yeah, that'll look really nice. All right, commissioners, any questions? Any questions at all?
I just wanted to make a comment, and thank you for the effort that you've put into this, and having this all put together nicely according to code. We're very appreciative of that, and it's great to see a local business expanding that area, so thank you.
Okay.
I have them backwards. Thank you very much. All right. Is there anybody here in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the applicant? Or anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Well, hello.
My name, my name is Scott Tonacliff.
And technically, we don't need addresses, I am sorry to.
Well, that's fine, good.
We're kind of changing that a little bit.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, you do need names, though, right?
We do, Scott, yes.
That you got. Okay. Well, I'd just like to speak on, in favor of it, for a variety of reasons, the landscaping, the routing, the intentions for the paved alley, which incidentally needs it, but mostly for the opportunity to see a business in the hilltop really grow exponentially. I think this is going to add a lot of value, not only to this property, but to the whole vicinity. You get this going, you'll have more foot traffic, you'll have more vehicular traffic, there'll be a lot of good things that can continue to come to it. So, I would certainly hope and anticipate a favorable decision. Thank you.
Surely, thank you. Anybody else to speak on this project? Carrie, or Judith? Well, you've changed places.
I, no, I'm just, I'm just ready to make a motion when you're ready.
Please, go right ahead.
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Can I, who did the second? Lee?
I agree with this staff respo- bleh, I agree with the staff report to approve.
Cochran? Stray Hall?
Yes.
And Hart?
Uh, yes, wholeheartedly approve. I'm so appreciative of your business. I have no doubt that this will be nothing but success. I have only, only heard wishes that this existed with the convenience of a drive-through, so I have no doubt that this will only be a wonderful addition to the city. Thanks, thanks so much for your business. All right, moving on to our next item of business, which is on behalf of Tom Thomas of Place of Refuge. Our petitioner is here. All right, let me give the quick.
Is your microphone?
Yes, it says it's on. And I think yours were not, and they are now. Are you good?
Yep.
Okay. This is item B. It's request HV 19-07 of Tom Thomas on behalf of Place of Refuge at 518 Brown Street for a hardship variance to refrain from providing required off-street parking spaces. Proposed plans provide no off-street parking spaces for the 84-seat place of worship. The property is zoned R4C Resident, Central Residential District. Section 17.10.040, Table 17.10-2 of the Davenport Municipal Code requires nine parking spaces for an 84-seat space of worship, that being one space for every 10 seats. This is third ward, also Alderman McGinnis's ward. And Scott, if you would please like to address this for the city?
Scott Copes, community planning. So, we've received a plan for an addition to this building here at 518. Should this plan be approved, there'll be a subdivision plaque combining these two lots. The addition would come out to the north, and it would be the sanctuary area of the place of worship there. With that addition, you know, there's parking requirements, landscaping requirements, things of that nature. This kind of shows what the project's going to look like once completed. Here is the existing building, and then this off to the side is the new building, and they would add the entry the way there. And this is just another view of it, looking straight on. And this is a planned view of the seats, so there's 84 seats there. We sent out notices within 200 feet, we have not had any comments back. And so, looking at this, there are, again, there are nine spaces required. The plans call for zero parking to be provided. We've never had a situation where, I mean, these are, churches have always been allowed in residential districts, even with the previous code and this new code that we have. In my 21 years that I've been here, I've never had a time where a church didn't provide parking at all. There were a couple, two instances where they reduced the parking by a few spaces, but this is the first time there's been no parking provided whatsoever. I'm in doing our review, the, you know, the hardship, I don't see what the evidence for the hardship is. I think what they're trying to do is put a building on a site that's really sloped bad and not real large, and the building is just too big for the site. The physical surroundings, that's one of the things we look at. I admit there is a slope, and so sometimes slope and physical features are grounds for a hardship variance, but when there isn't enough room to do the use, it's more like putting, trying to put 10-pound bag of nail, you know, 10 pounds of nails in a 5-pound bag. It just, sometimes the use just doesn't fit the site. And during staff's analysis, that's what our conclusion was, that what's being proposed here doesn't fit the site. So, I, the unique circumstances, I think they're self-created by putting a use too large for the site. Protection of essential character, I think having all the parking off-street spread out throughout the neighborhood is going to have a negative impact, and so staff cannot recommend approval, and in fact, we recommend denial of the request.
Scott, can you remind me, in our code, since I'm new to the board, what percentage of the lot do we normally allow for building?
In the R3, I believe it's 40% for buildings, and it's 60% for pavement. So, we actually didn't even get to that calculation yet.
Okay.
But that would be something that we would also have to verify, that they didn't have too much building coverage.
Right.
It would probably be pretty close, I think.
Okay.
And I think they would make it.
Okay.
So.
Judith.
I drove past the site today, and it's a very difficult site. It's got slope one way, it's got steep slopes another way.
Yep, that's correct, yeah.
Yeah, it's very difficult to build in anyway, and it doesn't look like there'd be appropriate setbacks, is that correct?
Right, in order to do it, you would have to really engineer the site beyond what it would be worth, I would imagine, in order to accommodate the landscaping and the setback and the parking. I can't say it, it's impossible giving those slopes, you know, if you want to spend enough money, you can probably make it work, make the water runoff work, make the landscaping terraced, which would be the setback area.
It's a very difficult site.
Right.
To start with.
There are certainly challenges there, and it's, you know, most of the churches that we have in residential districts sit on much larger lots.
And the streets are narrow in that area, too.
Right.
Is what I noticed. I also noticed that it's been approved for a loan, as well as they've hired a builder. I noticed signs there today, when I went by.
Any other questions, comments? Thanks very much, Scott.
Yep.
Mr. Thomas? And company? If you'd like to please come on up and provide us with your names.
Can you go to the one that has the figures?
Yeah, so just the arrows can go, perfect. So I don't know, whatever one you want, but that's the first one, so use the right arrow.
I'm Pastor Tom Thomas.
And the.
My name's Jonathan Carstens, I'm with Streamline Architects.
Okay, and then present your case to us.
All right. Staff gave a pretty thorough explanation of the situation. Pastor Thomas has been trying to get a church going for many, many years. He's now gotten to the point where he's got this lot, and he's ready to do something there. I'd worked with him to get a set of building plans put together for a sanctuary addition to the existing house that is on-site. It's to a size that he thinks he can grow into. When we were looking at everything, we had planned out size, kind of shape, and all this, and we had submitted plans to the city, of which they came back and asked us to do a preliminary review of everything. We were able to go to the Public Works and do a review of it, where engineering, building department said they were okay with what we were proposing. Engineering had some concerns with the topographical issues on this lot, and being able to get cars out with the preliminary parking design that we had proposed to them. And zoning gave us the idea of how many spots we would need. Part of that review did not include the fact that the church also owns this lot right here. When we had proposed, during that meeting, I had proposed changing the parking requirement from the difficult use on the site with the building to having parking on that site. The news, I was, we were informed that the new zoning code does not count off-street parking or parking that is not on an adjacent lot, and that was not on an adjacent lot. Which then came down to the question of how would we proceed from there? The only option to proceed would to be petition for a hardship variance for the parking requirement, which, when looking at it, our hardships are that the topographical concerns with the lot don't give us very good access to have cars pull through and get parking on the lot. Drainage on that lot's very difficult, there's no storm sewer along 6th Street or Brown, the nearest inlet's down here on 5th Street, which would make drainage easier on this, this parking, on the potential parking lot down here as well, and the issues we have with what parking counts per the new zoning code. So, that's the situation we're at right now. We were hoping to have this conversation to be able to explain our hardship for the potential of having the church get the go-ahead to build their sanctuary attached to that house. If you have any questions or comments, I can go through the building itself, the problems with the lot, or any other concerns you might have.
How would you plan to address those topographical concerns?
The problems with this, the topographical concern comes with being able to get the dri- a potential driveway up and out of there without having a car bottom out. There is the, no good way without putting in a giant retaining wall to be able to lift the site and not have drainage dump onto the neighboring lot, which is why we wanted to get the requirement for the parking moved to either the different lot or on-street.
Could I ask Scott a question?
Sure.
If I understand right, the decision that the board is to make has to do with the parking, correct? Recogni- within the context of the overall situation.
Correct, so the, the existing site's required to have parking, the petitioner is correct, the old code allowed for satellite lots, the new code does not allow for, all parking has to be on the, the site.
Okay.
So, the request that they've put before us is for no parking on the site. And so, that's what's being asked for at this time. So, if there's no parking provided, then they, they don't have the topographic concerns, because the building can be built, it's just there wouldn't be any parking for it.
Does then, does that then make the building to some degree unusable in terms of the code?
Well, they, they wouldn't be able to build the building unless you provide a hardship variance for it.
It's a chicken and an egg situation, which comes first.
Because we do have to make a decision within the strict boundaries of the code.
If the sanctuary were built on this site, how much remaining room would there be for parking? Would there be any?
Potentially, we could get two spots pulling directly off of the alley, and that's probably the only logical way to get even that much, without running into the concerns with the lot.
Then is the design of the sanctuary, does it absolutely have to seat eighty-four? What are your constrictions? I know I'm asking you a lot of questions, but I want to make sure that we're.
The design of the sanctuary originally came from the design that he liked to grow into the space.
Okay.
That, the north wall of the sanctuary could move up or down based on quantity.
Judith? Looking at this drawing, the reason why it doesn't go all the way out to Brown Street is that is a very steep.
Right.
Slope.
Right.
It's not possible, it's steep and then it also slopes down this way, steep. It's kind of in a bowl.
Yes, exactly.
House. Scott, could I ask, I'm, I, I just want to make sure I understand about, there, there's no allowance for the satellite parking. Under, oh. Right, right, yeah, yeah, I'm just, so that, so the only thing we're looking at here is the off-street parking, in terms of the decision.
That's the way it was framed when we were discussing.
Right, I mean, they, if, so let's go through a hypothetical, if, if this gets approved today, the only place that parking will be provided, I mean, not necessarily provided, but the only spaces available to the, the patrons of the church would be on-street.
And who has authority over on-street parking? What, what aspect of the city would they need, would they need?
Well, city council basically is the one who determines where the, the on-street parking zones are, where there's no parking, where there's two-hour parking and, and those sort of things. So, an ordinance would have to go through changing on-street parking if, if some sort of change was needed in this area. And as you have mentioned, you know, these streets are very narrow. If there's parking on both sides of the street, I imagine it would be pretty, pretty difficult to get more than one car through.
Scott, have we faced a challenge like this before, particularly in one of the older neighborhoods in Davenport, where, for instance, the lots are much more narrow, the streets are more narrow, we have challenges with drainage because it is an older neighborhood? I mean, some of what they're up against, too, from my perspective, is, is due to the historic nature, just generally of the neighborhood they're in. Have we made exceptions in the past based on that or had this before us?
Sure, and I think one of the reasons we haven't had an issue is because in the past, we allowed the satellite lot. So, for example, there was a, a church near, kind of northwest of the village. I don't know if that's Thirteenth or Fourteenth Street, but there's a church up there. And they did a satellite lot, but it wasn't abutting their property, it was like one lot away or something. So, the old ordinance allowed for that, this new ordinance treats that as a disallowed use. So, you can't even get a hardship variance for it because you can't do use variances, you can only do a variance on, you know, size and number and dimensional type things, but not uses. So, in this ordinance, a satellite lot in a residential district of just parking isn't an allowed use. So, we can't even give a hardship variance for them to use that other lot. And so, maybe, you know, whatever this, the outcome of this case might be, the board may want to think about that issue in, in whatever way the board feels. Potentially, the board might want to make a recommendation to planning staff to, to think about that code and whether or not we keep it the way it is.
From my perspective, I, I think that, you know, not allowing the satellite lot in a physical situation like this is a little challenging, because if someone wants to have a church in an older neighborhood where there are space constrictions, it would be almost impossible to do it, just based on the size of the lots that I'm looking at on, on this projection.
Well, I mean, the, the petitioner is going to subdivide and combine two lots. So, ideally, in a situation like this, you would have four, five, six lots that would all be re-subdivided into one lot and the church would go there. So, it can happen, there are ways for it to, to do it and meet the code. And you're, but you're right, there are more challenges, you know, more costs with buying other properties.
Right, thank you.
And again, when I drove past, if, if I understand right, behind Five Eighteen, is it, is a playground. I'm pretty sure that's a playground and then there's a.
It looks like there's an older school back.
Or it's a, it's a brick building.
It's an apartment.
Apartment.
That is an apartment structure with a parking lot right there.
Okay, so, again, just to make sure I'm absolutely clear, for on-street parking, they would need to go before city council?
No, not necessarily, it would be first come, first served right now for that on-street parking. However, the code does have a section in it that people cannot habitually park in front of someone's residence. And also residences can get, I know for like handicap or something, they can get a space designated for them. So, let's say the church did go in there without any parking. Some neighbors may start to, you know, go to council and get their spaces reserved and marked off. And then what that does is just spread the people further out in the neighborhood and find, until finally, you know, they find people who aren't going to, you know, protect their space. So, there's going to be an impact on the on-street parking, it just matters how it plays out.
Potentially.
But, but they, they can, I mean, you can park on the street now.
The use of the church is Sunday mainly, most days it wouldn't be. And we have the benefit of having the large amount of frontage coming with a corner lot.
Is there?
Some of our people, excuse me, some of our people that go to the church, they move down there, right across from this church where we're trying to build, so it'd be easy for them to come. We've worked so hard to get to this point and have a restriction like a parking when we have available space. And I'm sorry if I'm tearing up, but just gotta know how hard we've worked to get this done. We started with nothing. And we created enough money to build, to have this church, we took time from Jonathan, we've got architect, we've got construction people on board, we're ready to do this and have a guideline, which I didn't even know there was a, there was a line, zoning line there or something. I had to go down and change that even though I owned the whole corner. And then for us to get to this point and we're ready to go, and we got a parking lot across the street, across the alley, that we could, that my boss said he would help us come in and landscape it and provide the parking for the people. And then to be, not to be able to do it, it would be devastating for me to have to go to church on Sunday and say, "We can't do it because we can't put enough parking behind the building." Some of our people carpool the church. So, it's not like we have a, a big mega church and taking up thousands of spaces in the neighborhood. There's parking on both Sixth Street, on Brown Street, you know, most of my people that go, they have children. And they're not two-car families, they're single-car, single mothers with children. And they come and we bus them. And so, parking should be the least of our problem when we're trying to do something for the community and try to build up that area. That area needs a, a beacon light in that area. And I've been walking the streets down there, I've been feeding homeless people, I've been clothing them. I want to be in that neighborhood. My heart is to be there. And, and for us to have to sit here and debate if we can do a parking lot. I'd have enough people to say, "You know what, Pastor, we don't need a parking, we'd walk the church." That's how dedicated they are for this. I mean, I don't, I don't know what else to say. I mean, we want it, we need it in that area. There's other churches down the street that don't, that have the same situation. One church down there has parking across the street, an empty gas station on Marquette Street. When the Baptist Church was there years ago, they had parking all on the street. I know the code's changed, I understand that, and I know you gotta stay within the guidelines, I realize that. But when there's a need, there's a need for this church there, how can you say no? Let's find a way to do it, find a way to figure it out how we can make it happen. I don't know.
I have a question.
I think, tell pastor, we're, we're trying to really think this through and still stay in the boundaries of, of our positions as a, you know, as a board. So, please understand, I, I understand that you want to be in this neighborhood and I think a church there would be a great addition. We just have to figure out, you know, whether we can make this happen or not and, and how we can help.
In a minute. Can we hang on just a second and get you up? Can we get you up in just a second? Okay. Carrie, did you have something to say?
Yeah, so, I believe it's Saint Paul. Or by Vandevere, is that not Saint Paul? Okay, so, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I know that there have been issues there for a lot of years. But they, I think what they did was they have two-hour parking during services on the street. And again, correct me if that's not correct, but is there not some way that we could allow for two hour, I don't know how long your, your sermons last, but.
Couple hours, sometimes I get worked up.
So, you get, do you get worked up sometimes? Maybe a little longer?
Yeah. You sound a little longer.
Maybe I'll stop down and find out. But is there a possibility that we could work, have the city work with somebody and say, "Okay, we can, we can allow two-hour parking from this, the church's services on, on Sunday." Not to say that, you know, Wednesday and Friday, but on Sunday. Is that something we could look at?
The, the board can, could ask the council, but it wouldn't, we, the council, the board, the zoning board of adjustment wouldn't be able to make any conditions or any requirements like that. And so, you could table it until something like that is approved or put in place by city council and then approve the hardship variance once something is in place. That would be the way to go about doing it.
Okay, so the city council then is the one that, that would allow to have?
That's my understanding, I'm not a hundred percent certain, but I do know that, so when you look in the municipal code, it's codified which streets have parking on-street and which don't. And those, when it's codified, it goes before city council as an ordinance. So, I believe they're the body that would have to make that decision. I don't know where it would originate with, maybe our parking department or something, but they're the final decision-making body.
So, recognizing that the zoning board of adjustment, as it relates to a hardship variance, really has very little room for finding solutions, whatever. We, we are very narrow in the way we can make our decisions. And because we're quasi-judicial, unlike something like the city council or planning and zoning. I guess the question, Scott, follow up with what you just said, and perhaps throwing this out to you folks as well, would it be worth tabling this and let them go after some, a, a different avenue? I didn't mean that as a pun, a different way to go about it? Or what, what is our responsibility in a circumstance like this, or our options?
Yeah, I, I think if it's tabled, the petitioner could do a survey of the on-stri, site, or on-street parking there, find out how many spaces are available. Some of these lots nearby might not have any dwellings associated with them. So, you know, if they could find out how many on-street parking spaces are available that don't impact residential homes, and let's say it's six or so, that only leaves them with, you know, three that would be adjacent or across from homes that are occupied. So, I mean, a survey like that would be helpful and then they could find out where they need to make a petition to get it before council. And if it would get approved, then I think that would be easier for the board to make a decision, I would under, I would believe.
So, working with their alderwoman would be probably a, a good way to go at this point?
Yeah, I, I think so, yes. And city staff, yep. But I think, you know, it, it would need to be tabled until that is sorted out and then we could time it probably so that this could be back on schedule so that, like, the day after or something, because council meets on Wednesday, we could meet on a Thursday. So, once they know what the process is, we could set it up that it comes back here the day after it, it has a meeting for it at council level.
I would be supportive of that idea. I'd, I'd like to move to, to table this until we can go through those steps and have these folks work with councilperson McGinnis to, to resolve what they need to resolve and to look at off, on-street parking.
Would that count? Our, my biggest concern right now is, we can get all nine-plus parking spots with the satellite parking. Problem is, it doesn't meet the code. The same issue was raised with us for on-street parking as well, that it does not count for those numbers. We can, there are three-plus spots here and I think it's probably five along that side that are directly adjacent to our property. So, we would have probably eight spots just alone with on-street parking adjacent to our park, our lot. If it takes putting the one spot on the lot to get to the nine, I can make that happen.
Scott, in the past, I thought you mentioned there had been exceptions made for the, the number of spots in a few cases, is that correct?
Well, I mean, you have the right to, to grant this hardship variance based on the number of spaces that they're providing adjacent to their own property that, which wouldn't impact other properties. So, that's something that you could do, whether it's one short or whether they're all happen to be provided, or if they provide one on-site, so you have options either way. You can, you can make that number whatever you want.
Okay.
But you can't, you can't, you know, require certain areas of the city, you know, change their parking designation or things like that.
Real quick, my wife pointed out to me that this building here, this, this eight oh nine building is a humiliating shelter. There's no cars there, there's a parking lot here that we possibly could talk to them about renting this on Sunday to give us some additional parking. Our members live here, so this street here and here is clear. There's no driveways or, this is a fence right here, so that would not be blocking anybody's driveway on that side, if we were able to do that as well as using our adjacent lot across the.
So, numbers-wise, we have the amount, it's just it's not on-site.
Carrie, you're, is your lit?
Well, I know you had a motion on the table, I, but I wanted a further discussion, so I didn't second it. But, so I, I would like to know if you have talked to Alderman McGinnis about any of this?
She knows that we're building the church there.
Okay.
She doesn't know we're at this point. She's been down to several activities that we've had in the neighborhood.
Okay, but does she know of the difficulties?
No, she don't, I don't.
Okay.
No, she does, I don't think she does.
You know, and the other things that we're talking, I mean, different solutions, uh, that we're talking about, now gets us out of what we're here, what we're here for. So, um, I, I would agree that, I worry that we allow some things for some and maybe not for others. So, I, I would look for a motion, uh, to table this until Alderman McGinnis can look at it, you can have some discussions, um, and maybe find some, work with the city, the staff and see if, um, there's something appropriate that we can help you with or that they can help you with.
And may I ask a question on this Scott? If, um, if they have the property that, that you own, that is the adjacent property over here, if I'm not getting my miss, addresses mixed up, are we? That is the adjacent empty property that can be used for parking? If that can be used for parking only on certain days of the week, can that be made a, 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 not as a standing satellite parking lot, but as a special use, somehow worded so that it is not a standing satellite, that it somehow fits so that they can use existing unused property instead of tying up public's street parking? And, and they can use property that they own to park their cars on, on church days? Is there some way that that can be?
The, the short answer is the ordinance right now doesn't have a, a means for that.
The short answer is this was clear. I was wondering if there is not possibly a law-
I, the only way I know of is to change the code. So we would have to change the code to be similar to what our old ordinance was, where you can do, get a, a, a special use permit to do adjacent parking to uses in residential and that sort of thing. Right now, they're just, there isn't the mechanism. And I don't see any other place where, I mean, we can't, we can't just, you know, the, the set number of things that, that are, can be permitted through special uses is set. I can't add something to that list without a code change.
And how are we allowing that to be the public parking spaces to be set aside for this use every Sunday?
Pardon me?
How might we be making public parking spaces available for this use every Sunday?
Well, the on-stri- on-street, you mean? So, let's, I'll take you through a hypothetical. Let's say today you just approved this saying they have spaces adjacent to their property which can accommodate eight or nine. It's a variance that you approve. There's no, there's no conditions that they have to use those spaces. There's no condition to how many there are nearby. It's just something you approve. So it can be done that way.
It's just a variance.
If you feel there's a hardship.
Right.
And it doesn't tie those spaces to anybody, any person or anything. It's just available off, on-street or on-street parking, so.
I hear what you're saying. I just sometimes cease, fail to see the logic, that's all. And this is just one of those, I just-
Um, so, so another code change we could do right now, it's not allowed, but in commercial dis, in commercial districts, um, you're allowed to count a certain number of on-street parking towards your requirement. Right now, we don't have that in residential. So again, I, a code change could allow that, but right now, without a code change, we can't, we can't do it through the ZBA.
Right, we just have to grant the hardship variance.
Right.
Or, but they've got their own space just sitting there.
And another code change that we could do is that existing lots that already exist in residential areas can be leased for churches. I mean, that's another code change that we could do to alleviate the situation. Because they, apparently there's a, a underutilized or maybe not utilized at all lot right next door to them. So that would be another, again, a code change. I, I wish we could do something without a code change, but the only solutions that we could come up with would be code changes. And thus, that's why we're at the, the hardship variance stage.
Well, one of, I, I'm thinking as the zoning board of adjustment, that, um, tabling it at this point to allow them to, uh, pursue some other, other ways rather than just saying yes or no at this point, so it's clearer for us. Because, you know, w- we're not the planning and zoning. We are very strict in, in how we're supposed to be considering these things. And we're probably overstepping some things the way we are where we're talking about this.
We're just brainstorming.
Yes, yes. So, I, for the, the board, I would recommend tabling it, letting them pursue, um, uh, working with staff and, um, and then maybe it doesn't even have to come back to us. Maybe it does, I don't know. Uh, do you want to let, before we make a motion?
Oh, absolutely, yes. Ma'am, you had something else that you wanted to offer, some suggestion? Since we are adding these, these things, if, could I, since, could we get you on record with your idea here?
I would suggest we open it to public discussion and then-
Sure, thank you for making that clarification. Opening this for public discussion for anyone with comments in favor, in opposition, or just comments in general. Please, if you'd just give us your name and your sug, your comment. And if you'd step up here, and you might need to pull that microphone up down just a smidge. There you go.
Comment for-
Your name and then whatever that's, the suggestion was that you had?
My name is Stephanie Thomas. And, um, my suggestion is, um, in favor of, there's a park there, which is public property, public parking already. Which means that if that's already public parking and if people are coming there, people are able to park there. The eight oh nine again is a homeless shelter. Nobody has cars there. And they have a parking lot right there. I actually sit on the board of the people who own that property. So, asking them, can we use it, would not be a problem. I know that's kind of, uh, a different story, but what I'm saying is, and then right in front on Sixth Street and down on Brown Street, that even though it's a public street, that's not, uh, where residents would be complaining about parking because it's us. Across the street are our neighbors. They have built parking for their, their, their house faces Sixth Street. And they have parking in the back where they have built and fenced it off. So it wouldn't be a matter of blocking them either. And across the street, again, are our members who live there, eight oh four and eight oh two. Our members live there. So, what I'm saying is basically, if the park is public parking already and there's no time limit where people have to park there, they could, our members could park there without a problem as it is. We've had several functions there. Alderman McGinnis was there at our functions. But even with the functions that we have, we basically service the neighborhood where there is a lot of homeless people. Nobody has cars. And so, it's not an issue even when we do have functions there. We are there. We see it. The, the neighborhood, we know the people. We've been in the neighborhood passing out food and, and different things, so we know the people. They're waiting on us to get there. They're not complaining about us as we do now. We s, we meet there right now and there's never a problem. Never a problem with people even coming through at all. We've never had a problem. I just wanted to say that.
Okay. Thank you for that idea.
Scott, if they were able to utilize that parking at Humility of Mary, would that be considered adjacent, not satellite? If they had something in writing with Humility of Mary?
Yeah, I mean, if that was an option, we wouldn't be here. We would have allowed the leasing. So it, it, right now, as the code's set up, it's, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't allow for that. It has to be the, under their ownership.
Okay. Was there anybody else here who had any additional comment in favor? Or in opposition or just in general? All right, seeing no one that shuts down comment on this, I think what we will do is move forward with this motion then, um, to table this, um, to allow, we're, we're basically looking at some consideration moving forward with city council and staff, correct?
Um, I would table to a specific date so that in case nothing can be reached, it comes back before you and then you can make your decision.
I have one question. Would we be able to revise the plans before reconvening?
Pardon me?
Would we be able to revise the plans before reconvening?
Yes, yeah. And we're, and, uh, legal right now is figuring out the city council cycle for applications, because it takes six weeks for an application.
I don't have, you're on, okay. I don't have the council cycle in front of me, but it will take at least six weeks when, once it goes before council the first time. So I was going to calculate out eight weeks, so there can be drafting and discussions, and then we don't miss a date.
And the other thing is if you table it to a certain date, you can always at that date table it for another, uh, time, timeframe as well.
Having been dutiful, I've shut my phone off, so I don't have a calendar handy.
I have one.
Okay.
There should be one in the packet.
In the packet, uh, towards the end where the calendar was, that was in the application, it's actually in there.
And it sounds like it's possible, maybe I'm wrong, that they may come up with a, a redesign that does not need a ZBA hardship variance. Is that correct?
Uh, probably not likely, no.
Oh, okay, okay.
We could potentially find a way to add two or three spots to the site. And so, instead of asking for a reduction from nine to zero, we would be asking for nine to three. If that would change ZBA's mind.
And again, the problem is we, we have certain factors, you know?
Yes.
That, that we have to stay within as we make our decisions.
We have found the poke right now at the new code.
You know, and, and one of the other things, um, the code just went into effect in January and there's two things going on. One is they're, they're finding some changes that, that they overlooked, okay? And I'm not saying this is one of them. And the other one is, how quickly should we start doing spot changes to the code? So, there's-
Yes, this is the struggle.
It's a struggle, yes, it is.
Six weeks.
I would suggest July twenty-fifth or August first to give staff enough time to talk with the petitioners and council members to draft an ordinance change and then allow the six-week cycle to go through. So those dates were July twenty-fifth or August first.
And, and that is the beginning of the cycle or?
That would be when you would meet, excuse me.
July twenty-fifth and then six weeks out from there?
No, July twenty-fifth. I'm sorry, I wasn't looking at your meeting cycle, I was only looking at Thursdays. So I would su- suggest July twenty-fifth or August eighth.
Is the beginning or?
That would be the end, that would be when this comes back before you.
Okay. I'd prefer July twenty-fifth if we could, the sooner the better.
And, and a better date for me?
And you, you set the date for this?
Uh, please, twenty-fifth, there's a chance I would be here for the August date. So let's, uh, have a motion to table till August, table this matter to August twenty-fifth. July twenty-fifth, thank you.
I make a motion to table a request HV nineteen oh seven for, um, the place of refuge of five eighteen Brown Street for the hardship variance until July twenty-fifth to give the petitioners time to work out-
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, yes, thank you. To give the petitioners time to, uh, work with your alder, when the, the council and, um, and staff.
I second.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Sorry that that will push that back, but at least that does, that keeps it alive.
It's not a no.
Keeps it alive.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Uh, we have no additional business on today's agenda. A motion to adjourn would be entertained.
I move we adjourn.
A second please?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned, thank you all.